That's part time over there until they decide what they want to do.
Before we get started tonight, a council member can be sworn in. May I, please, be the honors?
Yeah, I got mixed up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you get him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you both stand close together, no, we're not going to.
Got it? Okay.
I take bribes.
Yeah. Dan, I, your name, do follow this order.
I, David Worrickley, do follow this order.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently, I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge my duties, discharge my duties, according to the law, according to the law, and to the best of my ability. And to the best of my ability. And you, may I count on that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
He used to show you so a favor to. I must tell you, here you will sign this. We will keep the record. You can copy it. I'll give this copy for you. We will keep the record.
Hey, Justin. Want to move your drink?
I take bribes, too.
I don't give them. I'm just trying not to turn it all off. We'll just, we'll just pan everybody. Maybe the audience. Well, there's Justin.
It's 6:00 P.M. For this December meeting, the common council order, please rise from your seat. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, I would like to welcome Dave Worrickley to the council. Representative Chris Victory. Worrickley was appointed by the Republican caucus to complete the term of councilwoman. Congresswoman resigned in October. The term will run through the December 31st of 2023. So, welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
Professor Aldrich, will you call the board first?
Standing Laura.
Here.
Mike Geisling.
Here.
Spencer Kingley.
Here.
Dave Worrickley.
Here.
Cody Nelson.
The first order of business is the public hearing on the preliminary engineering report for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. Without objection, we will suspend the meeting of the common council at 6:01 P.M. And open the public hearing. We have a colleague, Butler Permanence Schreiber, who is here to assist in answering any questions. John Bradley is here as well. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this topic?
I just want to make a quick note, too. There's an attendance sheet that's coming around. Part of the...
Requirements.
Part of the process of the public hearing. It will have a sign that everyone here that's present. And I thought I would just give a real brief, just a real brief review of some of the, you know, the news, just a couple of the topics that we've touched on already. And just see if there's any other questions or comments.
Very good. Thanks.
So, as we know, as we discussed before, the city has prepared the preliminary engineering report to respond to some requests for additional capacity and to address some, some planning for future growth. The existing plant has functioned well over the years. Most of the components are at least 30 years old and in need of service and replacement. And so, what this, what the project is that's contemplated in the P E R will address is, will address the, the growth requests from industrial users, growth requests, and planning for the city. And then also upgrade the current infrastructure and make it current with, you know, with modern technology and expand the treatment technologies. And it's the intent of the city, pursuing participation from all of those stakeholders. And this public hearing is being held as a part of the state requirements for the state revolving fund in order to address and take any questions concerning the project. I guess with that, are there any, are there any questions or anything that we haven't discussed in a previous meeting or already that anyone would like to address? And if not, then we will...
Last call for questions. Appreciate you've been here a couple of times to kind of give the technical review and what the flows and the passengers would be. But this is a requirement for SRF on either IFA as a column notice. This will be a fairly easy summary to write on a call.
Would I make things easy? Everyone's calling out.
Yes, everyone's calling, that's all right.
So, if there is no one else wishing to speak on this matter, the board's hearing is now closed as the meeting of the council resumed at 6:04 P.M. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, the minutes from the December 22 meeting. Are there any additions, deductions, or restrictions? For those of you who were present at that meeting?
I am not. Question, everyone, say more please, Dan.
Spencer, is there a second? Without objection, the minutes are current, so let's read.
Everybody was able to sign in on the hearing? Thank you very much.
So, the department reports for November were included with your packet. Without objection, the reports will be added to the record events for this meeting. And then due to the agenda items, so we'll dispense with any other board at this time. So, there were a couple of items due to one of our last meeting that we didn't get to. And first of those was a memo from the city attorney, Senator Carter, offering an opinion on the subject of, that caused a lot of controversy at the end of our October council meeting. A specific question presented for consideration was whether a council member may, in either his or her private or public capacity, carry a petition on a matter slated to come before the common council. The conclusion from the three-page memo that Mr. Carter presented is that, quote, "The council member's actions here, violation of no law, were at odds with the company accepted ethical duties imposed upon elected officials. As such conduct of this nature should be discouraged in the future, particularly where a council member is acting under the guise of a private person rather than the elected official that they are," unquote. Justin goes on to recommend that the council adopt the code of ethics to further reinforce these ethical duties and obligations. Are there any thoughts on this, from council? Or perhaps any sentences to, to ask Justin to draft that code of ethics? Judge Graham, Robert, and thank you, Justin. And the other comments on the, on this project were probably up the memo that Justin Martin drafted, and which was in the packet both last time. And there's, Justin, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, I don't think there are comments. No, we must say.
We had, I think, once indicated that we thought we should proceed with drafting a code of ethics for elected officials. This is fairly common in other communities, is it not?
Yes.
Is there a consensus from council to proceed with, with asking Justin to draft such a code?
Yes, absolutely. I agree with that.
So, the consensus is to proceed. So, Justin, could you add that to your first?
I wanted to know, listen.
Okay. Also, I wanted to update on the utility maintenance building being constructed at the site of well number five. This is planned to house both water and street departments. The water department, of course, will have the building. Will be funded with the remainder of the state revolving fund, funds for the drinking water project. And the street department is not a part of that initial construction, but could be added if the site is large enough for that to occur. We haven't yet determined whether to proceed with that or if we do, what the method of funding would be. So, that will be an ongoing discussion as, as we proceed. We did advertise for a request for proposal for the construction of a utility building on the site as a build, operate, transfer project. The proposals were due on December 2nd, and one proposal was received. That came from, the proposal was a combined proposal from B W Construction and G M Development, and also working with the Bolling Engineering. It is the general contractor for the drinking water project. The city has had previous discussions with both the V H E Construction, which is Grant, Baton, and with Ray Mart, and G M Development on other projects that are contemplated within the city. So, we do know that they have certain qualifications for such a project. The next step is for us to assemble a review panel. That would be a five-member panel to review the proposal against a checklist of requirements and stipulations. And then if warranted, to proceed with negotiations on price and schedule. So, I would like at least one council member to be on the serve and no other two, since that would require, and it will be notified in any case. But if you are interested in serving on that review panel, please either indicate some now or get with either, or tell Henry or with me, if you have any interest. Before we go on with the agenda, I did want to note that Todd Price had decided not to, he's going to submit a new proposal to the area plant commission for his property at 418 North Washington. So, that agenda item will be removed during this evening's discussion. Now, the first item of new business is ordinance 2022 dash 23, establishing rates for water and wastewater utilities. That would be effective in January of 2023. The rates will be advertised in the paper, and there will be a public hearing to be held at a special council meeting later this month. We're talking about establishing, I think we need two additional meetings for this month. Sit out there and do that, I think.
There's a great time for that. There's a way to be one hour, I think. Do it away, don't.
That is the crew that's, that's doing the repair. It's not the actual train going through, but this is, it takes almost as much noise, not quite. So, we noted, thanks to beam runners, that there were some errors in the wastewater portion of the ordinance, and we will get those corrected and sent back out to everyone. So, I can go through and read them all, but I'm not sure that that's necessary. All that we're doing at this time is introducing this. The next step will be a public hearing, once these are published in the paper. And then 10 days after that, we can vote whether to adopt the ordinance. Is that correct, Dan?
Correct. Yep.
So, do we need a motion to approve the endorsement of the rates?
Yeah, I would make a motion to, or make a motion to introduce and to advertise for the public hearing. And then, I think I heard you say you're going to be establishing the date of that public hearing later on this day.
Yes, yes, this meeting, because we knew that. I think it probably will be, if available, we need to have a meeting on December 12th. If we can get a forum, we'll need additional appropriation materials to be able to do that. So, we're thinking of that on their calendars or still other conferences. And we'll, we'll deal with that when we get to that. Anything else in that we need to cover with respect to that?
No, so December 2, well, that would not be the public hearing date, I understand. Because that, that wouldn't give you enough time, enough advertising done.
For this one, it would. Not for this one, yeah. What are the appropriations, it would, so. Oh, maybe we'll have three meetings in December. Yeah, okay. So, is it 10-day periodism, or?
Justin, is that correct? I always, I, I think it's, I guess 10 days before public hearing. Yeah.
Right, they had it today by noon at the latest, with the pleas, an extra pleas in order to get it published in the legal for this week, correct?
Well, it could go in. I mean, if you got it in by today at noon, but you didn't, so, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, because it wouldn't have been done.
Yeah.
It can't be counted. It would have been paid for this one, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I want to see, see whether they could publish it. Yeah, Wednesday, so they would have an exception. Correct, though, another couple of weeks before we can have the video, the public hearing.
I'll tell you, we're getting a lot of special requests from governmental entities that want their everything published immediately on a Tuesday. You can try, you know, I don't make that decision. Thank goodness.
It's, the, either it just cramps us.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to do it all.
The paper only publishes once a week.
Kind of cramps us, too, in trying to get things done for the paper, yeah.
Okay, so, Dean, or Justin, anything else that we need to do with respect to the ordinance to line?
I'll make a motion, I would go ahead. About ordinance 2022 dash 23, and advocate, like, advertise and introduce those.
So, that really is set to, approval to advertise.
And introduce those to the public, and we'll set a date.
Any discussion?
Would you be able to let the mayor know tomorrow? If there will be a rebuilding Wednesday, favor?
They all need to call the floor office, that's Susan's call.
We could call, yeah, Susan.
Yeah.
So, we can just separate, like, Susan?
Yeah. So, we have a motion to advertise the rates and proceed with setting a date for a public hearing, which will be set probably in our special meeting on December 12th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At our November meeting, I greet the council on the ready initiative from the state of Indiana that allocated $500 million for regional initiatives. The greater Lafayette region is a region which the city of Delphi and Carroll County are participating and have received $30 million in allotment from the state. Residential development will receive a total of about $8.5 million out of our greater Lafayette region. And that will be shared among the six counties, southern part of the greater Lafayette area. The ready dollars must have a one-to-one match from the local entity. And last year, the council set aside $2.5 million that could be used from the city's reserve funds, that could be used to develop the burn rate property. As, as you know, that is proceeding, but not on the case that we had hoped. So, what, what you propose doing is to, basically, a new resolution that establishes that the $2.5 million could be utilized for residential development within the city of Delphi. And that is Resolution 2022 dash 19, that is in your packet, all right? Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I would, I would. I know it's not, no.
A motion and a second discussion.
I think it's in the region where the, making more broad if the things aren't happening as quickly as... If the, I would, I would.
And a discussion? Another question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next is a resolution 2022 dash 20, that would authorize the mayor to submit a letter of writ of up to $1 million in match for ready funds to be, to be utilized for residential development within the city of Delphi. The actual amount will be determined by whatever project that's being submitted. At the present time, it would appear that the apartment building that we previously discussed might be the first project, but it's early days on that. But we do have to have a commitment to the greater Lafayette group and then also to the state by the end of December. So, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022 dash 20? A motion, aye, is there a second? Second from Spencer. Discussion, questions?
Up to one million, correct.
Up to one million, correct. Not to exceed, yes. And of course, before, you know, any of that commitment is actually made, even have a project that we'll discuss as a council, it really takes a minute. All those in favor of accepting Resolution 2022 dash 20, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2022 dash 21 is presented, reauthorizing the sale of a one-acre parcel at Boone's Corner. The previous resolution that was passed a month or two ago indicated that a public hearing had been held on that. In fact, it's not required, and it wasn't held. So, the current resolution provides that clarification. And it's, Justin, do you want to add anything to that?
No, it's never served, we just, I'm pretty sure it was a notice to adjacent landowners that's required.
Right, and that would be called as...
In that public hearing, yes, yeah. And that was just a breaking foot on my part, so I apologize.
No, not a problem with that. But this, yeah, so there will, before this will proceed, assuming that we, that council agrees to reauthorize the sale of the land, there is a, an adjacent property or who's interested in purchasing it. So, there would be a notice that would go in the paper to that effect. And anyone else who might be interested could then get in touch with the city. So, is there a motion to reauthorize? Resolution 2022 dash 21.
I would like to make a...
Question from Cody, is there a second? Second by aye?
Question, so, I don't see how I just will drop it again. It's not the, is that what it's on?
It's landlord.
Like, not, not even unofficially, what's it called? The lane, potentially, or access.
Easement?
Yeah, sometimes, like, there's unofficial easements, so we, is there not anything to that?
Yeah, there, there's an easement to the city to access it.
Yeah, it's restricted to the city. This was an old well, sorry. Sorry, gonna pass it, the new is from 60, 70, 80.
Did that access it, what did you mean, or?
No, it was restricted to the city. So, that would be removed, as the property that's always been, Dave would not include that easement.
But it isn't joint property ownership, we had access to it.
Right, yeah, this, no property totally surrounds this one acre. And I believe it's a, kind of a trust in seventh life, and they're ready to sell the, the fourteen acres that surrounds it. And, you know, they, life, it'd be a lot easier for them if they cleared this, the ownership of the parcel that sits right in the smackdown on us, in the middle of it. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2022 dash 22 is presented with proposed meeting dates and coming from three for council meetings. Is there a motion to accept those meeting dates as Resolution 2022 dash 22?
Second.
Okay, from Spencer, and a second from Cody Nelson. Any discussion on dates? And then from previous board of works, that Spencer has a conflict with one of those dates. And it appears as we get closer to that April timeline that there would not be a corp available for that meeting that we might discuss that at all, okay? But he was good with approving the board of works as, as presented, and... certainly might be as with this as well.
Yep.
All those in favor of accepting the meeting dates 2022 dash 22 as presented is.
I have something. I'm sorry. Do you guys have any time on board of works? Do you guys feel like six o'clock? Do you guys have enough time?
Didn't ask him, yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that.
I think it used to be, we started at 5:30 and that would be tight for some of our people. And so 5:15 is seems to be feasible.
Sorry.
No, no, good question. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So the resolution 2022 dash 23 is in your packet. This is presented with proposed additional appropriations to be made by the end of the year. These will be advertised in this week's conference. And we need to schedule a public hearing along with preparation on Monday, December 12th. And then pass this resolution 10 days after that date, which would make that meeting on December 22nd. So, and we do have a quorum. I know Spencer is available for Monday, December 12th. Is there anyone who is not available for meeting December 12th? Okay, you know, I'll hang on whether December 12th will work for you.
I'll check real quick here.
And send this check in as well.
What would be the time for December 12th?
Is it six that would, that you would be calling?
Yeah, yeah, I would be ready.
Appears that we will have a quorum for 6:00 PM on December 22nd. It should be a very short meeting. I'm in the mayor's institute of Indy. Pardon? I'm sorry, the second meeting of the 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. So this, the first meeting that we're discussing is the 12th, which will be next Monday, 6:00 PM. And appears that we have one for that time. And Spencer will reside over the meetings since I'll be at the mayor's institute of Indy at night. So we really don't have anything to, to, they're presented. There'll be a public hearing and they'll be advertised, the public hearing. And then no sooner than the 22nd, we will be able to approve the appropriations. And Leanne has a timeline that she has to meet with State Board and.
EOG.
And EOGF. So that second meeting would likely be on the 22nd. And. Yeah. Which is. Thursday. And would you be available at six? Spencer, do you?
Yeah, I'm free.
Yeah, I don't know. I may not. Okay.
I thought 4:30.
The 22nd?
Okay.
And so we would have a quorum. So let's go ahead and set that meeting date this way. I don't know if further action would be taken to go down to that and to set those things in motion. Appreciate, appreciate that, thank you. Resolution 2022 dash 24 is presented with fund transfers to be made by the end of the year. Is there a motion to pass resolution 2022 dash 24? Motion from Spencer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Cody. Any discussion on the transfers? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. In your packet is an agreement to allow the city to contract with Make My Moves to attract remote workers to live in the city of Delphi as we get housing. So we will note that the contract is conditional. It's conditional both on acceptance and approval by council and also the funding availability from Indiana Economic Development Corporation, which is providing matching dollars, which is why we would like to go ahead and approve this, even though we, it may be late in 2023, at the earliest before we would activate this. And Brian, are you representing? See someone on the call.
I, I am, yeah. So Ben's, Ben's wife got deuced this afternoon.
Well, I can understand why he was not here then tonight.
Yes, yes. So I'm here to, to answer any questions that anybody has. I know you guys have already probably kind of talked about the program in great length. But if there's anything that I can kind of help with questions or anything along those lines, I'm happy to, I'm happy to inject if that exists.
Yeah, Ryan, I think I had asked Ben if he could quickly go through the PowerPoint on this, which I do have. Would you mind if I bring that up on our screen? And are you able to walk us through that?
Uh, yeah, I'm totally able to walk you through that.
Okay, let me see if I can lift that up.
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we're coming through loud and clear.
Perfect.
And this is now, I think in the form of a PDF file, so you'll just kind of walk through that. And what I think we're particularly interested in, Ryan, is what the experience has been. Why are communities doing this, number one? And I know there are many communities in Indiana that have taken part in this and kind of an overview of what the results have been. And then why would we want to do it? What's the return on investment if the city does use this as a, as a means of attracting talent? Would that, does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, so obviously, why would anyone do this and return on the investment? I'm sorry, was there anything else kind of?
What other communities, I know you're working with other communities in the state that have engaged your company to assist with recruitment. And so, yeah, if you can just kind of highlight a few of those success stories. And it looks to be like the Southern Indiana component, when we get to that, is the one that would be probably the most comparable in terms of average salary that we might expect in this area. So.
Sure.
Yeah, so tell me where you'd like to go with this slide. So I'll try to negotiate this.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see it up on the screen just yet.
Okay, let me hang on just one second here.
There you go, okay.
Are you seeing it now?
Yep, yep, that's absolutely perfect. So.
It's absolutely perfect until it hasn't. I really shut down the recording.
So I'll just kind of start talking about that first slide that was going to pop up. I mean, I think a couple of things to kind of touch base on with respect to Make My Move is that, and you can, you can kind of move on to the next slide if you want there.
Can you see that?
I can, yeah. Catherine, the economic, the remote workforce. So then if we move on to the second page, the second slide essentially. I'm still on the title of page.
Oh, no, okay, hang on just a second.
Yeah. Basically, just a couple of, couple of highlights, right? We always, with, with respect to this slide, we always kind of talk about the problem, the, the opportunity and the solution. And so you can just stay on, right there on the, you know, that, that slide. I can see kind of part of one slide and part of the other. But essentially, the problem is people or lack thereof. And so the US and world populations have been declining, you know, really ever since the 1900s essentially. And so the old play of, of economic developers targeting and selling to employers is obviously less effective when you have more jobs than you actually have people. So the communities that Make My Move partners with, essentially, they start thinking of recruiting people as sort of this new front in economic development. The opportunity was, is, is remote workers. And so pre-pandemic, you know, we had five million remote workers. Then overnight, we flipped from five million to 40 million. And so we know from articles and sources, data sources such as Upwork.com, that over 18 million remote workers are expected to move in the next three years. As you can see that the next slide that kind of is titled Remote Worker is here, is here to stay. We pulled, we've got about 70, we've got, actually, it's up to over 80,000 applicants right now that, that have filled out an application and said, I'm 100% remote and I'd like to move to a, you know, a new community.
Ryan, I think we may have just lost you. You're probably just wondering.
Kind of a telling statistic that essentially lets us know that, you know, this phenomenon, this remote work phenomenon is not going away anytime soon. Mayor, if you want to scroll down to the next slide. So this one just kind of tells us that the era of retail economic development is upon us. These remote workers are recruitable. They show support and enable to pay for community amenities. And we know that over half of them would move to a new city or town if they were given an incentive that helps to cover the cost of moving, assuming that the community has desired amenities that they're looking for. So these people are often college graduates. They're often the top wage earners in their field. And we do consider them to be very valuable. And then if you want to go ahead and scroll to the next one. We actually, we work with a gentleman by the name of Drew Klasik from the Indiana University Public Policy Institute. So this exact return on investment calculation, this is an example of a remote worker that we actually moved from Silicon Valley to Greensburg, Indiana. So software engineer living in San Francisco, making $150,000 a year, which we all probably know that that's not going to get you very far in San Francisco. The only difference that this model kind of left out is that the household size was actually four. The remote worker brought a trailing spouse and two school-aged children with them from, from Silicon Valley to Greensburg, Indiana. And so what Drew essentially kind of says is that if you're making $150,000 a year, the annual economic output in one year alone is going to be $125,711. And out of that, $13,000 is, is considered to be annual tax contributions, which essentially will create 0.86 jobs. And if, and if the, the remote worker and, and, you know, their family stayed there, I mean, this really only takes into account the remote worker. It doesn't actually take into account the value of the trailing spouse and any school-aged children. And if those, those are nice added amenities that come with it. But the value if the remote worker stays there for, for seven years probably, the net present value is over $776,000. And if you want to go ahead and scroll to the next one. We kind of plugged the, the numbers in for Delphi. We used 100,000. I think at the time, the average household income when we did this in the state of Indiana was 100,000, $100,000. It's like 102,000. It's since then, it's gone up to 110 or 112. But if we look at, you know, just somebody making $100,000 a year, let's say they relocate to Delphi, we, we think that obviously just $2,626 is kind of nestled into that $37,000 in return on investment. And so the total local impact, if they're making 100,000 and move from outside the state of Indiana to Delphi, the ROI is 37,000. That consists of the taxes and that also has sort of a multiplier effect built in. So likely what's going to happen is they're going to spend at least 20,000, $20,000 in year one alone. And then there's going to be about a multiplier effect of $15,000 as well, because technically they weren't living in Delphi or even the state of Indiana. So they're incremental. They're a net addition to Delphi and Indiana's economy. And so as they start spending money at, you know, local restaurants and, you know, let's say just auto shop, farmer shop, whatever, you know, you can kind of think of. Those businesses now have that person's money. They didn't have it before. So that gives them the opportunity to obviously grow and build. So about 20 to 25,000 is the amount that they'll spend in year one alone. 10 to 15 gets you that multiplier effect. And then you have the remaining amount in taxes. So that's where we, we can see that just from Drew's model, just somebody from outside the state, that the ROI is 37,014. I'll pause right there and because people oftentimes get questions. Does anybody have questions with respect to the model and the return on, and return on the investment?
So Ryan, this, this is good, and I think in terms of, it doesn't really tell us what the city's investment would be in this. So, and we're kind of going at it from two directions here. So for, for any of the, there is an overall cost for participating in the website and things of that sort, a lot of which would be paid for through the IDBC, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, MAF. But then the cost per person that would be recruited and accepted by Delphi as a remote worker would be, what, the $5,000 stipend?
So there's a, yeah, the relocation fee that most of the communities in Indiana, that they, they typically, they have a $5,000 relocation fee. And then on top of that, there are some, you know, there are some fixed costs that have, that have sort of gone into the equation. So basically, we do have the platform fee. And then we also have what we call sort of its, its operating. So it's marketing, account management and fulfillment costs. And then, and then the, the $5,000 relocation fee, along with, there's a mover commission once we actually successfully move someone. once we actually successfully move someone, those are, those are the performance-based costs. And so, I think when Ben actually quoted you, and I believe, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but he did send you a contract right there.
That's correct, and that has, that is in the packet for our council here for that.
Perfect. I could, I could answer any questions with respect to that, or kind of explain to everybody how kind of payments work. I don't, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of, of his, of the contract that he sent you, but we both have been working with tons of communities in Indiana. I think to date, we're up to about twenty-five communities. So I think what he had kind of locked you in on was part of, we had a five hundred, we had a five hundred thousand endowment from Lilly, and that matches your contribution one for one. And then the IEBC comes in and matches that total amount. So I, I, I'm under the impression that whatever he kind of quoted you on, you would be basically, from a community perspective, you'd be responsible for twenty-five percent of like, you know, what it would normally cost somebody to do this program. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, good. And if you want me to kind of touch base on any of the other slides, I'm happy to do that as well. I think there's a couple of case studies in here.
Uh, yes, I believe they're likely. Is that relocation fee just per person or per family?
Per household. And one thing a lot of communities do with the relocation fee, so the whole goal, obviously, is that we're moving people, we're moving households outside the state of Indiana to Delphi, and obviously, we want them to stick.
Ryan, I think we may have lost you for a second.
It'd be a lot of times what communities will do is they'll offer, per household, they'll offer twenty-five hundred the day that they sign a lease or a mortgage. And then also, then they'll, they'll give them the remaining amount, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days later, so that way, every community has, they have that person, that, that household, obviously, their remote worker, and if they have a trailing spouse and any school-aged children, they have them there for at least a year, if that makes sense. That slide above is pretty good, actually. So just real quickly, the solution, obviously, in this whole thing, I'm sure you guys have figured it out by now, is Make My Move. And we are an online marketplace that connects people shopping for a place to live with communities that want to actively recruit those people. Our platform essentially enables communities to articulate and market their unique stories. We give you, we allow you to engage an audience of qualified workers who are looking to move today. And then we give you the tools and the expertise to actually facilitate the relocation of new households. These, these case studies, they're all pretty good. I just want to touch base on them because this is all from twenty twenty-one. Bloomington, Greensburg, Muncie, Southern Indiana, and West Lafayette. And we knew that Bloomington and Muncie and West Lafayette would be successful because, you know, they're college towns, and we know that, you know, some of the Gen Z's and Gen X's and the millennials, they like to be closer to college towns. And we, it's just one of those things where it's nice to be close to that for a little while after you graduated. Greensburg was the one that really kind of put us in a position to kind of be like, okay, like, if this works in Greensburg, we feel like it could work anywhere in the country. And so, but I think it's important to show you that we started out with those five. And so, Bloomington, they just, they, they actually just paid to have access to our platform. They didn't run a full-blown campaign like, like what Ben kind of quoted you on. We do have a hundred percent renewal rate with the campaign. In fact, everybody upgraded from the previous year. And then you can kind of see Q1, we brought on Richmond and Noblesville this year. Q2, Hennepin County, Carahoe, Marion. Q3 was Croftonsville, Lake County, and Waddash County. And then Q4, we actually had a pretty significant fund. And I think a lot of it was because that's when we got that, that five hundred thousand dollar Lilly and Nowicki Fund. And so, outside of Jay County and Logan's Board, we also brought on Passasco County, Huntington, New Haven, South Bend, Elkhart, Perry County, and then Connersville and Evansville. So we had a really big jump in Q4. And then if you want to go down to the Greensburg case study, so it's, it's interesting. When we do a full-blown campaign, we will come to Delphi. Our marketing team will be there in person. We always have a kickoff meeting with stakeholders where we kind of sit around and we like to hear from you all and anybody else that you think would be, should be there at the meeting. We kind of like to, you know, sort of identify and pinpoint all the, all the ingredients essentially that make the sauce so special in Delphi. And so, when we were doing that with Greensburg, it was really interesting because for about thirty minutes, they sat around and talked about how it was such a great place to live because, you know, it was sexually located on I-74 between Cincinnati, Indianapolis, and kind of off the beaten path, Louisville. And so, we, we, we were like, hey, this is all great. If you're trying to get out of Greensburg, we're trying to move households and families to Greensburg. So we really need to laser focus in on what makes Greensburg so special and why nobody's left. And what came from that conversation, one of the board members, Kami Wang, she's, she kind of threw out there for just the sake of a soft incentive. She said, "Hey, you know, if we're looking to get families here outside of a couple of bridge games, my husband and I don't have a lot to do. We'll be grandparents on demand, we'll fill in for the kids at school CP. We can help get them to and from school if that's, if that's an issue or if it's an emergency. And we'll even watch our kids if they want to go have a night out, night out on the town." And so, our marketing team, who was pretty much the same marketing team at Andy's List probably about fifteen years ago, back when Andy's List was kind of more, a little bit more well-known and more popular, they were, they were sitting around, like, okay, this is pretty good. We can, we can run with this. So we did. Mayor Marsh, at the time, was, he was like, "All right, I'll be happy if we get five applicants," like, let alone five committed movers. And so, we ran with the grandparents on demand through a lot of earned and paid media. We had over eighteen hundred applicants in six weeks that wanted to move to Greensburg. And you can see the, the soft incentive package that they had outside of the five thousand dollar relocation fee. Because I will tell you, nobody is moving anywhere for five thousand dollars. And so, they had the, the grandparents on demand, then they had the seat at the table, invitation to nonprofits, fundraising events, including the annual gala to support the Decatur County Memorial Hospital, invitations to home cooking deals in neighbors' homes, winner membership to a new working space, YMC, farmer's market, theatrical performances at tree county players, and then voting and pitching at Lake City. So they had a really good welcoming sort of, hey, you know, come to Greensburg. You know, we're, we're a small town, but we're located, we're, you know, smack dab in the middle of, you know, some nice-sized cities. And at the end of the day, you know, we know that our, our remote workers, the three most important things, well, two of the most important things to them when they're thinking of moving, number one is cost of living, and number two is safety. So, you know, Greensburg portrayed that the cost of living is, is right here, and then also that, you know, it's a safe community where people, you know, look each other in the eye and not to be cheers-esque, but everybody kind of knows everybody's name. And that's, that's what some of our remote workers are looking for. So then, if you kind of scroll down to the next slide, so twenty-twenty-two Indiana activity, a lot of this stuff's changed, but we did get two-point-five million in matching grants from the IEBC. The target was six-hundred-and-twenty-eight residents for twenty-five million in new annual economic output. And I think with twenty-five communities on board right now, we will absolutely crush that. This is, I think this is still about a couple of months old. So we've had over, I think we've had over a hundred and fifty-five new households, actually. Let me see if I can find this updated, kind of, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a hundred and fifty-five new households, and we've had over three hundred individuals that have moved. And then over seven hundred, seven million in new annual economic output. The average household's changed to, it's just over a hundred and ten thousand. And again, when we run these programs, we know that seventy percent of the boogers bringing a trailing spouse, thirty percent of them had at least one school-aged child. So again, those are just some side benefits that really are, we're not even taking into consideration, or at least Drew Klasik is not taking that into consideration when he figures out the return on the investment. And I think that's probably the last slide.
Yeah, I think the last one is just the matching funds and the.
Yeah. And so, and I think, obviously, you're slated for IEBC matching funds, and you're slated, assuming you guys, you know, do ultimately decide to move forward. You know, you've got a portion of Lilly that matches what your contribution is, and then the IEBC comes in and matches the total amount essentially. And if you have the pro forma that Ben said, feel free to bring that up, and I'll, I'll answer any questions on that, or if anybody has any other questions for me, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer whatever I can for anyone.
I have a question. How many qualified relocations are committed, do you expect for Delphi?
I'm sorry, it cut off a little bit in the end. How many qualified relocations, what was that last part?
That are committed to be here, come to our city to live, to work.
Uh, I believe that is in the pro forma. Mayor, do you recall how many that, that you and Ben had talked about for the campaign?
We had talked about five relocations.
So five households?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, can you see that now?
I can't yet. No, I can't yet.
Still not, still not able to see that.
So you got the total, so out of the, for the five, for the five relocations, it looks like from a community perspective, you guys would be on the hook for a total of twenty-one thousand.
So, and that would be for all five. I mean, that would be the total commitment, obviously.
Yes, because, because. And then the IEBC matches the total amount. The way, and I don't, I don't know if Ben actually sent you a contract, but typically, the way that we do, so we don't, we don't actually include in like, sort of, the, the fixed kind of portion of things. We don't include the Make My Move Commission, which is once we actually move that person, that's a thousand dollars, and we don't, and, and, because we don't pay that out, and then we don't pay out, obviously, the twenty-five thousand, which is, that's five thousand for, you know, each household, that's the relocation fee. But they are included in the total, the eighty-four thousand. I know just from the IEBC's kind of perspective, the way that kind of we set everything up typically, since you're, so the Lilly money technically, it goes through IEBC, but we have to line item it because it was an endowment fund per se. So out of the eighty-four thousand, you're responsible for twenty-one thousand. And then just, we'll call it Lilly and IEBC together is a total of sixty-three thousand dollars. And we'll likely get you somewhere between sixty and sixty-one, sorry, not sixty, so sixty-three. So thirty, thirty thousand, or it would be thirty-one-five, somewhere in between there. You're going to get that upfront before any of your payments are due. So you'll get that before the, before the twenty-one thousand is even due. And then basically, once we've moved either two or three of them, you get the remaining amount from IEBC. So whether it's two or three, they say half, but half is kind of more in discretion, right? If you've got an odd number, if you do two or three. And so, so ultimately, what you would be making a payment on would be the Make My Move platform access and the program admin for thirty thousand. So you'd be, you'd essentially be paying the, you're, you're only paying a total of twenty-one thousand, but then ultimately, because you're getting all this money back from IEBC, so like, the first payment, I think, would be, if we're looking at everything, it's fifty-four thousand. I think typically, when we write the Make My Move contract, which is different from IEBC, it's half upfront, and then usually, the other two are quarterly payments. I know that's kind of, it's kind of confusing, but sorry.
It is contingent, I mean, our participation will be contingent upon the matches from Lilly and from IEBC, some of which would be upfront.
Yep, yeah, and I'm pretty sure.